You ready?
Uh huh.
Okay. This meeting was called to order at seven P M. Please join me in this pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
America.
What's your stand?
One nation.
Nation.
Invisible with liberty and justice.
Justice.
Okay, a little trivia. Uh, which president put uh, put in there one nation under God?
I don't know.
Eisenhower.
Stand again.
Eisenhower.
That's right.
Wow.
It was before Eisenhower.
So what does she get for that? What kind of prizes there?
Yeah, right. Don't they get a prize?
Yeah, you got it right.
All right. Notice that this meeting was emailed to the Herald News, the Record Office, the College Community, and posted on the P C C C website on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Roll call.
Alumni Rep Baylen. Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Duham.
Uh, here.
Trustee Esche, trustee Marco.
Here.
Trustee Moody.
Here.
Trustee Poe.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Tavetti.
Here.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Here.
Chairman Nutter.
Here.
All right, Harvey, you.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's you.
Okay, are there any, any corrections to the minutes, to the minutes? Okay. If there are no questions.
Excuse me, Harvey?
Yes?
Yeah, it's Moody. Listen. Um, I was he, I was here last week, I mean, last month, but they, uh, it, it, it went off and it wouldn't let me back in. I was all night trying to get back in.
Really? Oh, wow. Okay, well, the.
They just shut me down and, uh.
Yeah, last month was the month we had the problem with the technology.
Yeah. Okay. So we got to make a correction on that. Okay. Ready?
Uh, I don't think there's any correction there.
No, no.
I mean, I, we could, we could note that through its technological problems.
No, yeah.
That's, I think, the best we can do.
Okay. All right. Okay, may I have a motion on the resolution number one approved the September fifteenth, twenty twenty minutes?
So moved.
Say again.
Trustee Duham.
Abstain.
Trustee Marco.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Abstain.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Tavetti.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Yes.
Chairman Nutter.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, let me just give you a little update about, uh, wh- what is going on. Um, so I, just about five minutes before this meeting, I got the statewide numbers for enrollment this fall. So the community colleges as a whole are down thirteen point seven percent.
Ooh.
Um, this year, we're, we're down about fifteen. What, 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 everyone has found the same trend. Urban students did not go to school. Um, our, our drop off in schools like Eastside, Kennedy, uh, City of Passaic. Um, in some cases, fifty percent or more, less than the year before. And, and those numbers were, you know, incredibly consistent over a decade or two. Where we, you know, we get a very similar amount from Eastside, very similar, and, and those numbers are off by fifty percent this year. Uh, in the suburban high schools, we're pretty even in, in most cases. Um, in terms of the retention of our students from last year, um, we did just, it was normal, which is pretty amazing for us. I, it's, it's hard to imagine that so many students would come back. The biggest thing we heard from students, and this is anecdotal, is students said that, um, someone's unemployed in their family and they had to go out and get a job to help support the family, or if, if they were employed, they're working more hours in terms of trying to, you know, help out at home. Um, we also heard from quite a few that, uh, younger siblings are home be- because of school being remote and they felt they needed to, so their parents could go to work sometimes, they, they stayed home, you know, with the kids. So they put off their own education in order to, uh, wait, so we, we have been working especially within Patterson and Passaic with the, the guidance people in, in the high schools, because they're very concerned too. I mean, they don't want to see an entire class of graduates not go to college like this. I mean, that's, that's, you know, they're, they're judged also in terms of how many of their graduates go on to college. So, you know, we're, we're, we're not, we're not giving up on these students, we're going to keep working with them, whether it's, they start in January or whether they start in, you know, next September, um, you know, it would be tragic for a town like Patterson and Passaic to not have, oh, have a whole year of students not going to college. I mean, the long-term implications of that are, are really bad, you know, for, for the community and, and everything else. So we're, um, we're, we're making plans for the spring semester now. Um, you know, taking classes on campus is something that some students only want. Um, you know, so we're, we're going to try and offer some more classes in person on Atwater, Q, Patterson, and Passaic uh, in the spring, but still, the bulk of classes will, will be remote, will be, and students will be taking classes on, online. Um, you know, we're trying to find the right mix right now. Um, obviously, none of us know how long this is going to go on. We have had a few cases, uh, reported of COVID from, of students, and, you know, we've set up a protocol in terms of how to handle it. Uh, certainly has not been many. Um, you know, some are questionable, we're not exactly sure, uh, you know, what's going on. But, you know, we, we, we certainly haven't had any outbreak or, or anything like that, but we're watching it very carefully. Um, students are complying by wearing their masks at the college. If you go take a look at any classroom, students are, are being very compliant. Yeah, we're not even having the problem anymore with, you know, at the beginning, they were wearing your mask but not covering your nose or something like that a lot, and, you know, now that doesn't even seem to be much of a problem. Uh, it's become routine, taking people's temperature when they come into college, that system has worked very well. Um, you know, you just walk right through and, and it takes your temperature, and it's just another way that we can monitor people coming into buildings. So, you know, we're getting a lot of cooperation. You know, every, every staff are working very hard, it's, it's, it's just a very different kind of year. Um, you know, everybody's being challenged in ways they probably never have been challenged before. And, uh, I, I think we're making the best of it, but, you know, it's, it's. And, you know, we're, we're trying hard to make sure students are supported, you know, while, while they're doing it, and that takes all kinds of different ways of doing it. You know, there's just some students who are just having a very hard time learning. Um, our English as a Second Language population took a huge hit. Um, much, much, many fewer students than we've had before. I think that's a combination of, we have been seeing a decline based on less immigration coming into the country, and certainly, you know, places like Patterson and Passaic always have been spots where people immigrated to and, and then came to our English as a Second Language program. So, that combined with the pandemic, um, you know, we saw a, a fairly significant drop off in enrollment in ESL. But, you know, we're, we're monitoring the future trends very carefully and, uh, we're, we're, we're going to stay in it and do the best that we can at, right now. So any, any questions? I, I'll just add one more thing, um, our laptop program for students, you know, we, we set up a program where every student, every new student who took our college success course, you know, paid a fee and, uh, was able to get a laptop, uh, a good laptop, and basically it became down to about two hundred dollars per student, because we were able to subsidize it. And it, with, with, and, and it's, it's been a, a great success so far. We opened it up to all of our students at the same price, a hundred ninety-nine dollars, that students can get it. And, you know, through, through the generosity of a lot of people who gave to the foundation, even if there was a problem with a student affording it, we've been able to, I, I think in every case, help the student, you know, get it. So, you know, this, this hopefully is going to be a game changer for some of these students. You know, we know a lot of our students, you know, write, write their papers on their, on their cell phones. Uh, you know, that, that's no way to learn. Um, and getting them a real decent computer to, to do their papers on and to do this kind of thing on, you know, is, is a game changer for many of them. So we're, we're happy this is working right now. Hopefully by, you know, the end of this year, we'll have around two thousand computers out to our students who didn't have one previously, so that's, that's exciting, that that's happening. So we're, we're really glad we were able to make that happen for students. Any questions on anything?
No.
All right, so let, let me turn it over. Um, we, we had Todd Sorber and Jackie Canaby present last month on, uh, plans for academic affairs and, and for our foundation and institutional advancement. So tonight, we're going to hear from the other two vice presidents who are gonna, you know, discuss plans in their areas. And, uh, Stephen, why don't you start? Unmute.
Okay, sure. Um, Chris, can you put my PowerPoint up, please?
Yeah. We had it the other way.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, finance and administrative services encompasses a variety of areas. Um, cover our core services, but I, um, next slide, please. Have grouped them in the following, Bursar, budgeting, facilities, finance, food service, human resources, public safety, purchasing, and support services. And I'm going to walk you through some of the initiatives for, uh, some of the areas. Next slide, please. So the Bursar's office, um, are, prior to COVID, we had the, uh, initiative of updating and improving Bursar student communication, uh, promoting student use of the direct deposit for refunds, and promoting P C C C payment plan. And, um, what's important about those goals are, we work with our marketing department to try to put out, um, emails, flyers, um, brochures, just, um, identifying how students can, um, come to college. Uh, so they can get their, um, checks, if they have financial aid, and they can get it quickly through direct deposit. When I first came on board, what we found was, um, students would get checks where they had, um, issues with, um, receiving the mail, and then once they got the check, they actually would go to a check cashing place. So we work with our, um, our bank, so our bank comes in regularly to, um, allow students to sign up for free checking. And also the students, if they don't have a checking account or don't want one, they could cash our check at a P and C bank free. So we have that, um, feature for our students. Um, prior to COVID, we had, uh, one thousand six hundred and twelve students on direct deposit. We did a great job marketing, and now that, uh, we have three thousand six hundred and sixty students, so that's an increase of a hundred twenty-seven percent or over two thousand, where the students, uh, know, know FOS, where they can get their checks right away in their account. Um, they don't have to worry about any hassle. Because of COVID, we've offered additional tuition assistance. Our foundation has been a fundraising machine, so they've developed a process for getting students emergency funding there. Uh, so the students can get award through foundation, they can also, obviously, the C C O G. And also we have funds available through CARES, so students can complete a one-page application, get, um, aid to help them with living allowance, um, transportation, childcare, and pay their tuition. Uh, as Dr. Rose mentioned, uh, we've been trying to do this, when we put it in place this year, where students, every student that registers for the college success can get a laptop, so they're automatically charged, as Dr. Rose indicated, um, one ninety-nine, and the college supplements the rest, the value's a little over six hundred dollars of the laptop. Students have the right to opt out if they don't want the laptop or they have their own laptop. They just fill out a form pretty much saying they have a laptop and they can opt out of that. Um, we have a A and a B program, the A is all students for, um, based on all students that register for college success, so they automatically get charged a fee. Here, we've, um, have two hundred students that have collected their laptop. And then the B program is for students who, um, they're not registered for that class, but they want to take advantage of this great opportunity. So they just go online for the bookstore's website, they sign in there, and, um, if they're a registered student, they will automatically get a credit for, uh, four hundred dollars of the laptop, and the student to complete the transaction and get that benefit, they have to pay, they could pay through, um, their checking account or a credit card, and then once that transaction is processed, they can just pick up their laptop. Um, there is the picture of the laptop that they can get on your left, and then on the right just shows you our inventory for laptops. Next slide, please. Uh, in the area of budgeting, um, our annual initiative, which is the tuition and fees, which we bring for you, the board for approval, uh, with the president's recommendation. Budget protocol, what we want to do there, uh, we learned from the pandemic, we want to try to automate as much as possible, working with our I T department, we've had, we have a con- a consultant, where we're working behind the scenes to try to, um, uh, update that process and eliminate the paper. Uh, as we talk about the budget, I want to, uh, bring forward to the board, just, um, as Dr. Rose mentioned, our enrollment was down fifteen percent, so that's about a five million dollar impact on the college in terms of revenues, not just tuition, but that's a large portion. We also had a cut for the first three, um, months for the fiscal year from state aid. Fortunately, uh, we have some tools that we are able to use, we have a huge saving, about one point nine million for, um, vacant positions and another seven hundred thousand related to, um, their associated benefits. So there's some other things we're working on, so we look forward to bringing the various report to you next month to address, um, the shortfall. I mentioned CARES to you quite a bit, so CARES, here are the different funding sources that we have. Um, Higher Education Emergency Relief Act, that one is the college's portion where the college, um, can offset some of the expenses that are related to CARES to the pandemic. Similar for the, the one below that, the gears, the one that I like is the minority-serving institution. There, it has, uh, no restrictions, but what we're using that money for is a hundred percent, going back to the students, whether it's paying off their balances for, um, spring term or the fall term, or helping them out with a partial payment or their payment plan. So the goal is to, um, expend, spend all that money a hundred percent on the students. The last one that I have here is, um, is one point three million, we have that tied in projects and that's pending, we expect that to be approved. Next slide, please. Facilities, uh, the number one objective there is to provide a clean and safe environment. Uh, we perform air indoor quality testing, uh, every six months, that is something we've done prior to the pandemic. And we, obviously, that's paramount today, that includes, um, mold, bacteria, volatile organic compounds, um, so we're testing for those monthly, or I'm sorry, every six months. And, uh, one of the issues that we had, so, uh, one of our goals is to sanitize each classrooms after the class. Um, and then also, we wanted to do a better job on our restrooms, but the pandemic caused, um, us to have issues with our workforce. So a lot of the, our part-timers didn't come back, and so that was an issue, because we have on our, um, return to campus plan that we were going to, um, provide a deep cleaning, and we weren't able to accommodate that, to accomplish that without um, using a custodial staffing company to help us out with that. We have thirteen individuals that we're using, uh, from hours of eight to ten P M to help do deep cleaning, every classroom is cleaned after every class, and the restrooms are cleaned hourly. We have specific individuals assigned to all the restrooms that are open for the students to use. Uh, we have installed, uh, hand sanitizers throughout the cam- campus. You'll see on the right side, I hope you can see it, I see faces above that, uh, the dispenser that we're using, uh, we did a really nice job there. Uh, so it's at the end of the classroom, and then as students leave the classroom, they have, um, liquid hand sanitizer that they can use. Whether they enter the classroom or just walk by, so there's the wipes in the classroom, and there's the dispenser outside of the classroom. The firehouse project, uh, we had that out for bid, uh, for phase three. We expect the business to come in, uh, October twenty-second, and we expect this project to be completed one month from now. I'm sorry, one year from now, one month from now will be great. Personal protection equipment, next slide, please. Uh, we ordered twenty thousand, we jumped on that right away soon as the funds were available, we ordered twenty thousand masks, which are a combination of traditional masks and some, um, N ninety-fives. On the right side there, you'll see that's the inventory we have in-house. On the left, which is interesting, you'll see the shed, so we purchased two of those. So the, um, Patterson Board of Ed required us to have staging areas for the students before they could enter the childcare. So we have two, so the first one is where the parents walk their child through the shed. Uh, they wait there, and then their student is, uh, taken to the next shed where the temperature is taken. And then, assuming that goes where they're allowed to enter the building. So those were just delivered today, um, we'll have those in place in time for their first day of class. On the bottom there, where you see the please practice, uh, social distancing, this circular, uh, image. So we have these up now, but what we wanted to do was, uh, working with our talented marketing team, Meredith Baron, she decided that we should, uh, we spoke, we want to, um, make these very visible, and we also want to, uh, highlight the college's colors. So we're going to use those, that one there that you, you see is, will be on the floor, and the one on the right will be on the walls, and they'll be again placed strategically throughout the campus, we're going to start the role of services, work our way to all the other campuses. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, finance, we are, uh, number one guy, job for me is to show that we're great stewards. Uh, we're, the audit's underway, and the signal there is we get a clean report, uh, so looking for a clean report when this audit is completed. Critical issue that came up, which is a new initiative, is our control of retired, so our goal is to, uh, build our position. And hopefully, after the board meets today, that mission or initiative will be accomplished. Here, I talked about promoting direct deposits, uh, for students and also for staff. Staff have direct deposits for, um, payroll, but we want to extend that to, we're not traveling now, but for conference travels, because conference travel or any type of employee reimbursement, reimbursement, gets done through a check, so we want to just streamline that process and give the employee the option to get direct deposit, so that's coming soon. And then innovations in accounts payable, the pandemic has allowed us to do some things, uh, to stretch ourselves. We've learned to be able to process invoices through emails where both can confirm receipt of service or goods through an email, we just attach that to the receipt and we can process it, as opposed to this piece of paper circulating throughout the campus where we need to have someone sign it, so we're looking to, um, take advantage of that, keep that going. Um, we know that payroll did a great job, because you always hear when there's an issue with payroll, but you never hear anything with, um, people are paid, and I didn't have any comments, so, um, well done there. Uh, and that was all done remote, and, again, we have some synergies there, we want to, um, keep some of those, a lot of the innovations that we've, um, adopted because of the pandemic. Next slide, please. Uh, food service, uh, obviously, we want every year to have a pass all our health and fire inspection, um, that are done annually. And, uh, we want to do our student, which we do do, our, uh, student faculty and staff surveys. That was a tool that we used to, uh, renovate the cafeteria several years ago, and to try to change the food to address some of the feedback we got from our students. The last item, um, we had before, but we kind of tweaked it because of the pandemic, uh, our talented V P for development and foundation, maybe call, wrote a grant where we, um, got funny to, got funds to start, um, a food insecurity program where we, uh, had non-perishable items and a vending machine, and we, uh, set up the technology so that, work with I T, so the student can slide their I D card, that, so we use the existing system, and what we did was we, um, use that same admini- those same administrators to, uh, sign up students where they could get, um, one hot cook, home-cooked meal every day, one meal per day. Here on the left, you see the entree, uh, the top right, you have the menu, and so a student can get a, um, what's done is the meals are prepared daily, they're, uh, frozen, we have the inventory there on the right, and the students who sign up for the program can come and collect their meal, and so at least we can guarantee that they will have one, um, nice meal per day. We have about fifty students, um, that have signed up, we're promoting that, and we hope that grows. Next slide, please. Human resources, they're very busy, uh, obviously staying in compliance. Number two is a big thing for them, working with employees to, um, address their needs in terms of they may want, uh, some type of flex time to deal with their loved ones because of the pandemic, or because they have little kids and they have to adjust to the school schedule, so, um, they're busy with that. They have, um, worked with, uh, council to rewrite our, um, to update our, um, Title Nine procedures. And Title Nine, um, requires the institution to provide a procedure for students to file a complaint for, um, sexual harassment, sexual discriminations, and things of that nature, so we, we updated that recently, and then, um, every year around this time, we have the benefits open, open enrollment, it's going to be a little trickier this year, because they have new plans based on, uh, legislation that came down from the state, so here's, uh, previously, employees, if they didn't take action, they would default to their plan here, it requires them to take some type of action. So, um, look forward to seeing the outcome of this. Next slide. Public safety, uh, so they have, uh, annual training, some of the training includes, uh, active shooter, rapid response. Um, online free training through the C D C, uh, there are a lot of, uh, free trainings for COVID, things of that nature. Uh, as Dr. Rose mentioned, and I'm sure our C I O will mention as well, we, uh, updated our cameras, surveillance system, and part of that includes, as you see there on the right side, the monitor, where we, um, part of the protocol is we, uh, anyone that enters the building, they have to have their temperature taken. And so they basically swipe in with their I D card, their temperature is taken automatically through this technology here, and, uh, see the camera at the bottom. So that process is in effect, uh, the clear report, which is our annual requirement, um, we post, provide a, uh, it's about a sixty-three page report, by definitions that are provided to us, where we identify crimes that have happened on campus, I'm happy to report that, uh, as usual, there are a ton of zeros there. But if you want to see it, you can go out to the college's website at the bottom, uh, there's an option for public safety, you click on that, and then you see security report. And so that's where you can see the report, which is done annually, and, uh, I already mentioned the enhanced, um, entrance and exit protocol, which relates to the cameras. Next slide. And we've been spending a ton of money, so obviously, we're always, this, one of our goals is to try to figure out mail, mass mailings, to group them so that we can, uh, mail in bulk, so we can, uh, be very efficient there from a cost standpoint. Um, from asset management, we have a lot of equipment coming in because of the CARES funding, so we need to make sure that we can, uh, track and these items that come in, and detail the location, they're tagged differently depending on the dollars used. A lot of the new purchases are, um, related to restricted funds, so they have a different tag, tagging system there. Then our commitment is to, uh, for all jobs that come in, we want to, uh, respond to, at least do, have ninety-five percent of them completed within twenty-four hours, and the same thing with delivery, once we receive it, we want to have the deliveries, uh, deliver within twenty-four hours, and we want a delivery rate of at least ninety percent or higher. Yeah, I believe that's the last slide for me, I will, um, take any questions.
I'll, I'll, I'll just add, you know, I, I think Stephen's area probably, as, as, as much as anyone else's, you know, had to really scramble during, during the last six months, you know, at things that, you know, just paying people. You know, we, we had a system and that, you know, didn't, that wasn't set up for a totally remote system, so, you know, they had to, all the staff had to just adjust, and, uh, by all accounts, they've done very well, so, great job. All right, Brad, our, our newest vice president, and, uh, he, he came at the right time at the college. A, a lot thrown at him, uh, at this point, same thing there, you know, uh, technology with all of our instruction going remote and employees working from home. Um, a lot fell on him, so Brad, thank you in advance, and happy to see what, all you got.
Thank you, Dr. Rose, and good evening, everyone. Um, pleased to present you with an update on technology at the college. Uh, I'm going to be sharing just highlights, I mean, there's a lot that's been going on, um, too much to really share, but I wanted to pull out just, just some highlights of what we've accomplished, and also, you know, what we have coming, uh, this, later this semester and into, um, the spring and summer of next year. All right, so, I've taken a leaf from Dr. Canaby's book and tied our activities back to the college strategic plan. Uh, for the most part, the work that we're focused on. For the most part, the work that we're focused on falls under the organizational excellence strategic goal. And we're looking to improve service, reduce risk and deliver value to the organization and the students that we serve. And when I joined the college late last year, just after Thanksgiving. And one of the first items on my agenda was to assess the current state of technology and information security at the college. COVID-19 came shortly after that, which kind of delayed and delayed some of the work and shifted some of our priorities, but we still managed to complete assessments on, on both those items. For the information security assessment, we completed that around April of this year. And we conducted this assessment for a couple of reasons. The college retains, you know, sensitive data that needs to be kept secure for privacy reasons and to comply with state and federal regulations. And in addition, there are parties, both domestic and international, that are daily attempting to break into our systems. Either for mischief or profit. So if we are vulnerable in any areas, we want to make sure we're aware of those so that we can address them. The technology assessment, which was just recently completed, we're, we're awaiting the final report. But we have a pretty good idea from discussions and a preview of, of the contents. The purpose was to identify what we're doing well so that we can build on that foundation. But to also identify areas where we have room for growth and improvement. The assessment looked at IT personnel, technology funding, IT skillsets, the services and support we provide from IT. But it also looked more broadly across the institution at the use of technology and how we manage data across campus. Specifically, we looked at our main student and finance information system, which is Lucy and Colleen. In July, we made some changes to the IT organization. We grouped the organization into three main areas to provide more focus and direction. So what I was trying to do there was to bring those positions that have similar skillsets or similar purpose and group them together so that they can cross train more effectively and be more focused on what they're trying to achieve. So the departments grouped into three main teams. We have an IT user services team. So that, that's all the user facing services, IT support, classroom technology support, end user training, really the face of IT. The second team that we, we brought together was the infrastructure team. And that is comprised of, you know, system admins, engineers, those people that maintain our wired and wireless network, all the service and systems that support a lot of what we do on campus. The third team is our IT enterprise applications team. These are our programmers, developers. They manage and support the applications such as colleague. They work with departments like finance to improve and, and advance the use of those applications. They also develop customer reports and help provide data and also integrate products. For example, one of, one of the integrations that we support is between colleague and our learning management system. So as students enroll in classes, that information needs to be transmitted up to our learning management system. So students can log in and see their courses and content. Not all the changes that we wanted to do were able to be implemented as part of that reorg. Your COVID has introduced some delays and some constraints, but I'm looking forward to making some future changes to help advance the department there. I'm not going to talk about the student laptop program because I think everyone else has already spoken enough about that, but it was a great success and it was also a partnership between the marketing department, finance and IT to really make that happen. Also with Follett, our bookstore. So I think it was, I think it was a great success. And, and getting the technology into the hands of the students. It is, is, is just wonderful to see. You know, many of those students were trying to share, if they even had a computer at home, they were sharing it with their kids or with their parents. And it, it just wasn't working out. So this has really met a definite need. Some of the other changes that we've made over the last 10 months or so are improvements to our technology support services. So the first step in that was really as part of the reorg is, is bringing all those frontline support stuff together into one team. But a second step in that was providing a single phone number, a single email address, like a single way to, to contact IT to request help or to request services. In the past, people may have called someone they know in IT. They may go, you know, down, down the line of phone numbers to try and find someone to help them. Not even really being sure if it's the right person that they're calling for what they're needing help with. So by simplifying that, just having one phone number and one email address, it, it takes the question out of who to call and makes it easier to access those services. And heaven forbid, if someone's away on vacation and they receive a voicemail, you know, about some emergency that needs to be addressed. You know, this will help prevent those kinds of incidents from happening. Another improvement we made was to create an online support portal with a growing knowledge base of articles that help our students, faculty and staff really help themselves and address, you know, commonly encountered problems. So you'll see on the bottom left, we have some popular articles like how to reset your password, getting started with Zoom for our faculty. This has really been a wonderful resource for our students, faculty and staff. We've received a lot of positive feedback. At the top here in the search bar, you can just type in a couple of keywords about what you need help with and it will bring up all the relevant articles. So that you can get the assistance you need. We've also partnered with enrollment services and the distance learning area to bring their support articles under the, under the same roof. So it's, it really simplifies students' access to these resources. Another improvement we made in IT is to implement a support issue tracking system. So one of the things I really wanted to make sure it didn't happen was losing track of requests. So if, if someone calls into IT and says, you know, we have this, this issue that we want dealt with. Someone takes a note, puts it on a post-it note on the desk and then gets called off to another emergency and, and that issue gets forgotten. So what this allows us to do is to track every single request that comes in. We know who's reported the issue or the request, who's working on it. We've got all the interactions between IT and the person who's requested it. So we can, we have a history of, of what's been requested, the interactions that have happened. And we also know how long we're taking to solve those issues. And, and my hope is that we can use this moving forward to really measure how we can improve our service to the campus community. On the left here, you see time to resolution. So when a request comes in, we've set ourselves, for example, an eight hour time limit to resolve a request. And if we go beyond that eight hours, you know, the alarms start, start going off, emails start getting sent out. Hey, this, this issue hasn't been responded to in the last, you know, however many hours. So this is, this is a fundamental piece of our plan to improve customer service and IT. So looking forward to the rest of the semester and into the spring. Our initiatives, initiatives again fall under the organizational excellence strategic goal. COVID-19 and the need to work remotely really put new demands on our phone system that it was just unable to meet effectively. So as a result, we will be implementing a new phone system later this semester. It's going to allow us to communicate effectively regardless of where we're working. If we're working from home, we're in the car and we're getting a call on our cell phone. Or we're in the office, it's going to be seamless as to, you know, using our, our work phone numbers. It also introduces two-way texting, allowing staff to communicate one-on-one with students via text. And this has a great potential for areas such as admissions and advising for really adding that personal touch when we're, we're conversing with students. And it also adds call center functionality. And this was one of the areas where we really struggled with our current phone system. Now those, those main support phone numbers that we use for like enrollment services or for IT, where you might have six people answering or, or balancing all those calls coming into the one phone number. When we had to work remotely, we were forwarding it to like one person and we're getting a lot of calls going to voicemail. And it just wasn't the service that we wanted to provide. So this new phone system will allow us to really manage those calls more effectively. It won't matter if someone's working from home or in the office, we can, we can balance and direct those calls where they need to go. Information security improvements. This is something that I feel is very important for the institution. And the main goal here is to really address whatever findings came out of the report that we received in April from, from the security assessment. And to remain in compliance with, with federal and state regulations. And as a first step, just this month, we engaged the services of NJ Edge to provide us a part-time information security professional to work with us on developing information security policy, strengthening our practices on campus around protecting that sensitive information, making sure we can, we can ensure privacy of, of information for, for students and employees. And this resource will also help us with training, like employee awareness training. Teaching our, our faculty and staff how to protect, protect their identities and their information, both at home and at the office. We are establishing an employee laptop program as well, similar to the new phone system with COVID-19. Kind of made it work over, over the spring and the summer with finding old laptops and what have you, people using their personal systems at home. But it really wasn't a scalable or sustainable way of handling things. So we're providing all faculty and the majority of our staff with laptops that they'll use in the office. And if they need to work from home, for whatever reason, they can take their laptop home and work there equally as well as they could in the office. Now, because we're going to have all these student laptops, I think we distributed over 2,000 already to the students. Plus all the employee laptops, we need to make sure that our wireless network on campus can support all those additional devices. So this semester, we're working on surveying all the buildings to make sure we have good signal strength in those areas where we don't have appropriate signal or we are expecting an influx of new devices. We are basically taking all that information from the survey and designing improvements to our wireless network. And we plan to implement, implement those improvements in the spring semester. Last but not least, we are working on a new portal for our students, faculty and staff. You know, communications is, is always, always a priority. Improving our communications is always room for improvement. Keeping in touch with students and, and having some assurance that they're actually reading what we're sending them is, is a concern. So we are developing a new portal and this is just a snapshot of what the portal will look like. It's, it's currently in development. So how it looks may change somewhat. But it basically centralizes access to all of our online services and simplifies communication. On the left there, you can see it provides access to a lot of tools and services such as our learning management system, Blackboard, Panther Alert for emergency notifications and the like. It also has groups which allow us to do targeted communications. For example, the one you see here is career services. Students can be auto enrolled in this group. And they can receive notifications from career services about upcoming events or maybe new job opportunities. And they have control over how they receive those notifications. So they will show up under their activity feed and anyone familiar with social media will be familiar with the activity feeds. They will also be able to get them via push notifications on their mobile phone and also email. And they, they can tailor that, their communications preferences, which I think they will really value. We can also force certain tools to show up based on information. So the new portal is integrated with our other information systems. It's integrated with Blackboard. So we can see what course, the students can see what courses they have. It's integrated with colleagues. So we can make decisions and customize content to people individually. So if a student logs into the portal and their GPA is below a certain threshold, we can make sure that tutoring services shows up in the tools menu. So it really gives us a lot of flexibility and power in providing access to important services and in how we communicate with our students. So that concludes my presentation, my update. I'd be happy to field any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for Brad?
This is awesome. You guys have done so much, including, and you didn't even mention the website. I have to, I'm like, I'm just that awe about how much you can mobilize and do with being remote and this new way of working. So I mean, kudos to both. I just kudos to everyone, but this is awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, normally how many requests for assistance do you, you folks get?
Well, actually Chris, Chris is our new manager of IT support services. So I'm not sure if he has that data handy, but I've, I've been looking at it lately and we've been getting, you know, it's seasonal, right? So right before semester starts, we get bombarded with requests. But now we've kind of plateaued off in the semester. We're probably getting, I see an average of about 30 or 40 in, in the queue each day.
Okay, okay. And, and would you be able to then maybe triage them like, you know, if they keep popping up saying, uh, how do I reset my password? They could go for self-help like and do it.
Certainly. You know, this is just the first step in, in our platforms that we're introducing for support. There are actually ones that we can layer on top, which allow us to link support requests with our knowledge base. So when someone goes to get help with resetting their password, it will pop up automatically the article on how to do that, which will hopefully prevent a call or a ticket being opened. But we can also look at all the different types of tickets that come in. So if we get inundated, you know, this is kind of a silly example, but if we get a lot of requests for how to do a mail merge in Word and we're constantly getting these requests, we can see that data and say, hey, maybe we should offer some training on how to do this to help our staff. So we can, we can respond and react to the requests that we get. And we have a lot of, we're starting to collect a lot of good data.
Sign me up when you do that training, okay?
Do you want to learn mail merge?
I gotta learn a lot more than mail.
Yeah, let, let me just amplify one, one thing that Brad talked about. One of the biggest things that colleges, hospitals, schools, government, stores are doing is protecting our network, protecting our data. There, there are these crazy people all over the world whose only job it is, is to try and break into systems. This is what they do, you know, every day. And sometimes they just do it to make mischief, but other times they're trying to steal data. You know, they're trying to steal social security numbers and then sell them. And protecting that is, you know, job number one for, for Brad and his staff of, you know, because every day they find a new way to break in. So every day we've got to find a new way to protect ourselves. And, you know, the cost of a data breach is astronomical. We actually have insurance to protect us on that. But the cost is, you know, in, in both, in both dollars and in lots of other ways is, is just something you want to avoid. So you know, the, the, if you, if you talk about what keeps you up at night, you know, it's, it's protecting the network. That's, uh, that, that's really important. So it's.
I, I think the cost of a, a data breach for an institution like ours is about probably four and a half million. And that's, that's just for the, the records that, you know, we have to provide insurance and, and different protection services. And a lot of that's covered by our cyber insurance. But there's also the loss of reputation and how that might affect enrollment. So it's, it's not just, you know, cleaning up after a data breach. It's, it's, there are long-term impacts.
So a lot going on.
Lot going on.
All right. You, you'll see, we also have some business items tonight. You'll see a lot of the things we're purchasing are COVID-related again. You know, this is just taking over our lives now. I know you'll see some of the services that Stephen spoke about before in terms of supplementing our, you know, cleaning crew, supplementing our security staff, all who have, you know, taken on many other things at this time. And, and then just some more mundane things like who's going to pick up our garbage for the next two and a half years and a couple of other things like that in there. So happy to answer any questions on, on any of that, if you have any. Okay. So we do not need an executive session tonight. So Harvey, I'm going to turn it back to you to take us the rest of the way.
All right. So what we'll do is I'm asking for a motion or resolution number three. Consider agenda items A and B. Roll call.
I need a motion. And now roll call. Trustee Duhaime?
Yes.
Trustee Eskeche? Trustee Eskeche?
She may be muted.
Can't hear you.
I'll come back to her. I'll come back to her. Trustee Marco?
Yes.
Trustee Moody? Trustee Moody?
He's gone.
Well, he's there.
Trustee Poe? Trustee Poe?
Yes.
She said yes.
All right. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Trustee Esquiche?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
He's still muted.
Al, you gotta unmute your phone.
I'm just waiting.
Maybe away from phone.
He's still muted.
Yeah, it could be away.
All right. Vice Chair Tanis? She's muted.
She's muted as well.
Barb, you gotta unmute your phone.
Chris, can you unmute them?
I'm trying. I think I'm looking for the command from the phone side.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't see how to do it.
Trustee Tanis?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman Nutter?
Yes, yes.
I'm not going to hold everybody up. Not available. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Are, are there any remarks from the trustees, the public? Mike, there's something you gotta read. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Roll call.
Trustee Duhaime?
Yes.
Trustee Esquiche?
Yes.
Trustee Marco?
Yes.
Trustee Moody? Trustee Poe?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trevetti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis?
Yes.
Chairman Nutter?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.
Well, let's just hope one of these months we can stop doing this on Zoom and do this the, the way we should do it in, in person. Hopefully that'll happen sooner than later, but who knows?
Who knows?
Who knows?
Who knows?
Good night, everybody.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Don't forget to vote.